It is Tuesday, September thirteenth, twenty twenty-two. This is the reg- regular board me- meeting of the Adelanto Elementary School District. Really quick, it's really nice how the sun go- goes down quicker. Um, okay, so this is a call to ord- order, it's five thirty-one. Can, can I get a roll, roll call, please?
Trustee Eckes.
Present.
Trustee La French.
La French present.
Trustee Turner.
Turner present.
Trustee Webster.
Webster present.
Trustee Benz.
Benz present. All right, um, if we, we can please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Place your right, right hand over your heart, red, red heading be begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your founding, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite and just as well.
Thank you. All right, go, go, going on to two. Uh, adoption of the agenda. Two point zero one per proposed additions, deletions, and adjustments in the order of business.
Madam President, we do have one. Item fourteen point two-five, classified personnel resignation for the purpose of retirement. For Philip Gonzalez, the effective date of resignation is, should be uh, eight twenty-six, twenty-two, not six-two, twenty-two.
Twenty-two, okay. Thank you. All right, um, go, going on to uh, two point zero-two, uh, adopt, adoption of the agenda. Agenda, can, can I get a mo- motion to approve?
I guess my motion.
And can I get a sec, second, please?
Webster, a second.
Thank you. Do we have the discussion? Then call for the vote, please.
Trustee Webster.
I.
Trustee Turner.
Turner, I.
Trustee La French.
La French, I.
Trustee Eckes.
I.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, I, mo- motion passes five zero, zero. Okay, so let's, let's go on to three, spe- special rec- recognition. And three point zero, zero, one, uh, pre- stu- student presentation from El Mirage.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. We'd like to call up Principal Ward up to the podium and they, as they queue up, IT queues up the presentation. But we're excited to have Principal Ward and a student from El Mirage join us this evening.
Is, is, um, uh, the, the stu- student presentation from Mesa Lynn, Linda Red, Red, ready?
I have a, I have a thumbs up, Madam.
Yes, okay, okay, then, um, if you guys don't, don't mind, we'll switch you guys. Thank, thank you.
So we'd like to now reverse and call up Dr. Cameron and Mr. Forbes to the podium to give us a presentation on all the great things happening at Mesa Linda, as well as some of their staff members. So, welcome to the podium, Mesa Linda, Principal, Mr. Forbes, and staff members.
Good evening, Madam President, esteemed trustees, cabinet members, families and communities here and online. I am Dr. Cameron, Principal at Mesa Linda Middle School, and we just want to talk to you about us embracing this season of change and growth. So, next. All right, so we have two focus this year. One is on teacher clarity and the other one is on social and emotional development for our students. Um, one of the things that we did is make a place of belonging at our school. If you see on the, on the screen there, we have separated our campus into three distinct areas. One for sixth grade, one for seventh, and one for eighth. Um, this is primarily to let the sixth graders, um, enter into middle school slowly and become a part of our school. And it's also, as you know, the history of Mesa, to, to really focus on creating safety at our campus. So we have the three grade levels and we also have the three lunches for those students. Um, so that's a part of our building a safe space for kids. The next thing that we're doing along the same lines of social and emotional is we've adopted some school-wide efforts to try to change the culture at Mesa. So you'll see, um, some Bulldog Essentials, where there are ten essential rules, um, adopted from the Ron Clark Academy. And school-wide, we are pushing these rules to our students. And if you look at the thirty-eight weeks of homeroom, you'll see that those rules, um, are, the first week we went over all of them, and then every week of school, we will take two of those rules and just keep repeating them until we build that positive culture at our school. All right, so with that, I am gonna allow, um, some of my fabulous teachers to come up and share some of their experience and how they feel about Mesa.
Hello, Ward, I'm, um, Ms. Greeley, I'm a sixth grade teacher at Mesa Linda. I'm actually, um, leading the RCA, uh, the trip that we took to Atlanta and bringing back some of those things that we learned over at the Ron Clark Academy. Ron Clark was a teacher who, um, took his passion for teaching and helped his kids excel through all of their boundaries of low income, as well as a lot of behavioral problems. And we can correlate that to, uh, Mesa Linda switching that culture there with helping our students. He, um, chose to implement positive behavioral reinforcements for the students through music and dance and making, or gaining a rapport with his students to help build them up to, um, want to excel and know that they can be better. So through that, he did a house system, as well as his fifty-five essentials, which we have implemented, as Ms. Dr. Cameron said. Uh, the ten essentials from the fifty-five essentials, with starting there and then building from there. Um, and the house systems we have is a Bendy, we have Altrismo, Amistad, and Rivera. And all of the houses represents, represent something different. However, we teach our students that all of us, all of you guys have all of those qualities within each of those houses and what they represent. Um, one represents love and friendship, one represents, um, courage, one represents being a giver, and Rivera is the house of dreamers. Okay, so all of them possess those things within their, within themselves, and then they can share that with their peers and help build each other and build a better culture at Mesa.
Hi, I'm Joanna Koo, and I'm also a sixth grade teacher at Mesa Linda Middle School. Uh, my biggest takeaway from my visit to Ron Clark Academy was how confident and engaged their students were. They showed leadership, eloquence, and a growth mindset. Seeing the students and teachers in action re-energized me to foster those same qualities in my students. Starting with having students leading class sessions, having the teacher be the guide on the side, using hand signals for whole-class participation, and giving students a way to respectfully disagree with their peers. Um, so far, I'm loving the positivity in my students and seeing them blossom. I look forward to continuing to build those twenty-first century skills in my students and their, for their future success. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Mr. Damian. I am the music teacher at Mesa Linda Middle School. And together with Ms. Greeley, we have been working with the students and with our sixth grade students. And I've, I've just been fascinated by, by their performance and adapting the chants and singing along with us. I play the drums and we together are learning the chants. And it's, it's creating a sense of community, community and something positive for the students. And I just wanted to share my, that experience with you guys.
Hello, I'm Mr. Sam Tommasello. I'm the art teacher at Mesa Linda. I teach seventh and eighth grade art. Uh, I'm providing a space for display of art, making it a home. Um, trying to foster development of the artist as an individual. And forming a community-oriented artist as well.
And my name is Mr. Forbes. I'm the assistant principal, and I wanted to touch on what we did for PBIS-wise. Um, one of the things that our school has done is taken from be safe, respectful, responsible, to building pause, to make our kids possum. And that stands for presence, attitude, work ethic, and safety. And that's what our new slogans are at school, and our kids are loving it, that you could hear kids going around saying, "You're possum" and stuff all the time. Um, we've also brought in the barbecues from CNS. And they, the first barbecue was a huge success, and we're looking at having another one coming up in the thirtieth of this month.
I'll just wrap up really quick through those slides of the next one. Um, another thing about having kids belong is our ASB students have their elections of Vice President, Communication Coordinator, et cetera. What I'm most excited about is three hundred and thirty kids participated in that voting, and that was absolutely awesome. It was all online, kids did their presentations online, and all the kids voted, and that's just fabulous. I'm super excited about three hundred votes. So that's one thing, the next part. Um, this is just a picture of us having a really great time. On Fridays, we have, um, we have Cowboy Day, so you'll see us there. Uh, last Friday was Wear a Tie Day, and then you'll just see us acting silly and having a really good time. We think that, um, building a sense of belonging is being more than books and just really making school fun for students, and that's our focus. And then the next one, and the last thing about, uh, teacher clarity is building a collaborative planning and teaching, common assessment, et cetera. So you'll see five steps across the board there. We, at our last, uh, professional development meeting, we did our first one, where teachers all planned the next week together. So all doing the same objective of grade level standards, and we're just super excited about that. So we are only getting started. We understand that change and growth is a process. We plan to enjoy this along the way. And the last one, we look forward to the beauty at the end. So, that's Mesa Linda. Thank you for hearing us.
Uh, trustees, do you have com- comments or que- questions?
Are we invited to the barbecue?
Absolutely.
Thank you, that was great, that was.
Thank you, Mesa Linda, that was amazing. It's always exciting to hear good things and positive things coming from our school site after hearing a lot of negative information. So keep up the great work. I'm excited. Thank you.
You want to, um, and I will conclude that with, thank you for being part of ASD, Dr. Cameron, and I can't wait to see what else you come up with, along with your staff.
Trustee La French, or no?
Yeah, I wanted to say that changing the, the, changing the culture, um, at Mesa Linda, it is so exciting to hear um, everyone's involvement and getting the children involved and changing the timing from six, seven, and eight. That was a great idea. That was something that, you know, seemed like just a small idea, but it, I'm sorry for standing. A small idea, however, it was something that is gonna have such a, uh, big impact, you know, on transitioning the, the young sixth graders and with the, um, the, um, older children that, you know, just that by itself. And then seeing that the children took the time out to vote, that was just like wonderful. I'm excited to see Mesa Linda. I don't live, but, you know, a couple of blocks away from Mesa Linda, and I'm excited.
And I am, I am very, very hope, hopeful of all the good things I've heard about the staff and the students and the activities. And I really think that you are go- going in the right dir- direction, and I thank you and your staff for your hard work and your dead dedication to our stu- students. It is very much appre- appreciated very much.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you.
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, so now we're gonna go on to El Mirage, you are next.
Yes, Madam President, members of the board, I'd like to bring up, uh, Dr. Ward and, uh, her team up here to present on El Mirage, and thank you, Dr. Cameron, and the team from Mesa Linda. Appreciate you coming out this evening to, uh, talk with us.
Hello, everyone. Uh, thank you for inviting us to come. I'm very excited to follow up with you on something that you approved for us last year. You approved our Future Business Leaders of America Student Organization. We took our first field trip this last Saturday with our eight officers. We had, um, our first official meeting today with roughly twenty-five students who are interested in participating in the club. And this will be an elective class, alternative elective, that the students can take in addition to music. So we're very excited, and my, um, student helpers here are going to help us say the pledge and mission and the creed of the club. So Future Business Leaders of America is the largest business career and technical student organization in the world. Each year, they help over two hundred thousand members prepare for careers in business. El Mirage School has started an FBLA chapter, and I would like to introduce some of our officers and members who will tell you more about upcoming events and our pledge. FBLA inspires and prepares students to become community-minded business leaders in a global society through relevant career preparation and leadership experiences. This is Leslie.
I believe education is right of every person. I believe the future on mutual understanding and cooperation among business, industry, labor, religious, family, and educational institutions, as well as people around the world. I agree to do my, to do my utmost to bring about understanding and cooperation among all these groups. I believe every person should prepare for a use, for a useful occupation and carry on out, carry on that occupation in a manner that brings the greatest good to the greatest number.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I believe every person should actively work towards improving social, political, community, and family life, and this was our group that went. I believe every person has a right to earn a living at a useful occup- occupation, and next is Jason.
Um, okay, I believe every push person should take responsibility for carrying out assigned tasks in a manner that brings credit to self, associate, school, and community. What I also believe is that I have the responsibility to work efficiently and to think clearly. I promise to use my abilities to make my world a better place for everyone.
We are the FBLA.
A club of El Mirage School.
So we proudly represent Atlanta Elementary School District and the Inland Empire FBLA Division. Our first regional competition will be held February eleventh at Los Osos High School in Rancho Cucamonga. And we would love for each of you to join us. We'll send you invitations when we get closer. Thank you all for your support.
Thank you. Thank you for listening to us.
That's exciting.
Hey, tr- trustees, uh, La, La French, com- comments or questions?
I wanna thank you for coming and for sharing. Um, I want just a third of his energy. All right, you're on my day, you know, I'm very excited. Students are beautiful. Thank you so much for coming to share.
Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Eck- Eckes?
This is exciting. I'm very proud, and this is really classy. And I think it's wonderful to have this in our school, in our district, and to have the kids have this opportunity. It's just beautiful. So thank you so much, and I wish you so much success, and I know I'll try my best to be there to support. Thank you.
Trustee Webster?
I'm gonna be a little jealous. Um, I wish I had this when I was in school, cuz man, that is a clear, concise program, and I wanna congratulate Dr. Hunt for bringing it here. And I can't wait, so please get me that date, and I will, I will make sure I'm there. Thank you.
Trustee Turner?
Yes, I concur with my fellow trustees. This is exciting to see, you know, a different program being brought to the district and the excitement of the students, especially Dr. Uh, uh, Trustee La French. Your, your energy is contagious, okay? Love it. And I know, you know, the business leaders will, you train them up, they're gonna be amazing and successful in life, and just ke- ke- keep up the good work. I would like to see that at all of our schools, actually, because I think that all of us, all of our schools can benefit from that.
It's available to middle schools, so, middle school principals, if you want to in, join, it's not too late.
Great, thank you, thank you, thank you so much for bringing that to us.
And I want to say thank, thank you for take, taking the time to come out, I will here and share. And I think that this, this is a won- wonderful foundation you are set, setting for our stu- students and our schools and our dis- district, and I think it's one, wonderful, absolute.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to thank ev- everyone who came and shared. We, we true, truly do, uh, appreciate the, the information and the feedback from the schools. I, I believe the board would concur with me on this, that he, these presentations are truly, uh, appreciated. All right, so we are go- going to go on to four close sess- session de- declarations. We will be ta- taking i- items four point zero-two and four point two, four, four point zero, zero, zero five into closed sess- session. Uh, number five, public test, testimony be before closed sess- session. Do we have any speakers for closed session? I am, first, I wanna go to, um, do we have a speak speaker for A, ADTA? Okay, how about, uh, CSEA?
Austin, do you see anyone? Okay.
Okay, do we have any for?
Madam President, we do have one person that put down for closed session, but it's not related to closed session, so we'll ask that they, uh, have their comments in open session?
Uh, yes.
Yes, it's Ms. Rowena Galicio.
So we'll, we'll, we'll hold, hold your, your time for pub- public sess- session, Ms. Go- Go- Galicio. Okay, um, all right, so let's go, go ahead and re- recess to close sess- session. Can, can I get a vote motion to, uh, approve?
Eckes, my motion.
And can I get a sec, second?
Webster, I second.
Okay, can I get a vote, please?
Trustee Webster?
I.
Trustee Turner?
Turner, I.
Trustee La French?
La French, I.
Trustee Eckes?
I.
Trustee Benz?
Benz, I, mo- 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 motion passes five zero, zero, the ti- time is now five fifty-five. La French snuck in there. She, she, she's a nin- ninja. I just didn't see you. All right, so the time is eight thirty-one. Can, uh, let's have a call to or order, and Mrs. La- La Vay, can, can you please take roll?
Yes, Trustee Eckes. Trustee La French.
La French present.
Trustee Turner?
Turner present.
Trustee Webster?
Webster present.
Trustee Benz?
Benz pres- present. Core quorum is, is, is estab- established. There is no, there, there were no re-report portable a- actions ta- taken dur- during closed sess- session. So let, let's go on to nine pub- public test testimonymony. Uh, can I get a rep- representative from ADTA? Do we have one?
Mr. Duran, do you see anyone in the Zoom meeting for representing ADTA?
Jennifer Rader should be online.
Inviting her to a meeting.
Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Kraus, trustees, cabinet members, and stakeholders attending tonight. I apologize for not being with you in person tonight. I am still at home recovering from surgery, could not come out to attend. There are a few key issues I wish to bring to your attention. The first is the issue of paraprofessionals in TK and in the sped classrooms. More to the point, the lack of aides in these classes. We have survived on substitute aides in these roles, but these positions need to be posted and filled as soon as possible. For some reason, this isn't being addressed with all the expediency it should. Another issue is one that I know Mr. Kraus is grappling with, but it needs to be brought forward as it represents a serious violation of the contract. There is a glaring inconsistency with regards to middle school minutes across the board. Each school administrator cannot simply create his or her own schedule. It must adhere to the contract and match the other middle schools in this district. Mesa Linda's schedule has been altered, and administration has been aware of this since before the first day of school. This should have been an immediate fix. Tuesday and early-out day schedules are also over minutes, and this needs to be fixed. This, along with a laundry list of other things, is adding to a hostile work environment that increases daily. There is also a problem with our district's budgets. The unaudited actuals are on your board docs tonight, and one glaring takeaway is that the district did not spend sixty percent on teacher salaries last year, as they should have. This is required by ed code and carries the consequence of reduced funding the next year. Apparently, the spending of COVID monies last year showed an increase of expenditures across non-salary categories, resulting in the miscalculation. But surrounding districts had those same conditions and were able to meet the mark of sixty percent. We missed it by five point six-nine percent, which amounts to six point seven million more that should have been spent on teacher salaries. The raise we were given last year was insufficient in so many ways, but here is one way that impacts the district itself. We receive less funding when this rule of sixty percent is not met. And, as usual, I need to address the issue of class sizes. Several fourth and fifth cla- grade classes are still jam-packed at thirty-six to one. And if you could please visit the schools and see how this is affecting our students. You would see wall-to-wall desks, students squished with no space to move, and exhausted adults trying to manage behaviors and teach at the same time. The actual square footage of the rooms is itself an issue, but adding a paraprofessional to these classes would at least afford more personal attention to students and a way to give small group instruction while the rest of the class is supervised working. Even with a new administration, Mesa Linda's student population is still out of control. They still do not listen to adults, whether security or teachers, when told to return to class. This continues to represent a dangerous situation just waiting to erupt. There were six fights yesterday. Several teaching positions remain unfilled because it is so difficult to find people willing to work there, and there is an inordinate amount of period subbing that teachers need to do, giving up their prep time to do so, in order to cover the need for substitutes who are, again, unwilling to come to this site. Don't be fooled, the problems remain. I am asking each of you to come to visit our schools. Walk around the middle school campuses, come into the classrooms, see what is happening. Don't rely on others telling you, not even me. Come and see for yourselves. You are the overseers, the trustees. This is your district. Our success is attributable to your attention to these matters as you lead and direct. Thank you for your attention tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, do, do we have a rep, representative from C- CSEA?
I'm not seeing anyone.
Okay. Okay, so then we will go on to the pub- public.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, I have a speaker form in front of me, and I- Thank you, Madam President. I have a speaker form in front of me and I'd like to call to the podium, Ms. Risa Barias.
Alright, thank you so much. Good evening. Tonight, I'm coming with a pretty pressing issue, particularly from Columbia, where my son is a student. Over the last couple of weeks, we all experienced a heat wave. It was brutal and on our campuses, our kids experienced it in excess, especially at Columbia, where our kids don't have access to clean drinking water. They have water fountains on campus that spew out particles and gross stuff from piping. The kids say that the water tastes bad and that it's hot. And this isn't acceptable, especially because we live in the desert. Our hot months aren't going to get any cooler and we will have more hot months coming up. We don't know if our weather has turned for the rest of the year, but hopefully it has. In the meantime, our kids didn't have clean water unless, you know, the principal or teachers were kind enough to put out water for them. They could purchase it, but that's not an equitable solution for all of our kids. So, we have a petition and I want to thank Beatrice, another one of our parents at Columbia, for raising this issue in the first place. But we have a petition of about fifty families from the district asking that the district install the water bottle refill stations that we approved back in twenty twenty. Because we know that these were approved and our kids need clean water. This is a absolute basic safety need. When our kids are expected to be on the blacktop for PE, when it's one hundred and five, at the very least, we can make sure that they are hydrated. That is the minimum effort that we can put out for our kids to make sure that they are safe in this heat. So I'm happy to hand this petition over and I'll hand it over to Zania. Uh, thank you. Um, I thank you for your attention and hopefully expedient action on this matter.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Madam President, we'd like to call, uh, Ms. Rowena Galicio. If she's in the Zoom meeting, Mr. Duran?
I'm not finding anyone with that name.
Okay, well, we'll come back. Uh, next person we'd like to call is Ms. Brianna Amaya. If she's in the Zoom meeting, Mr. Duran?
No first or last name.
Okay, moving on to the next one, we'd like to call Ms. Cynthia Dean. If she's in the Zoom meeting, Mr. Duran?
Unfortunately, no.
And that's Cynthia with an S.
Yes, neither the first or the last name is pop- populate.
Okay, great. Uh, moving on to the next one, we'd like to call Ms. Liliana Morales, if she's in the Zoom meeting?
I don't have that name either, but I have someone with a raised hand under a different name. Ricky.
I'm sorry, what's the name that you're seeing with the raised hand?
Ricky. They're invited to leave the meeting and return with appropriate names, so we know who it is to call on.
Can you, you chat, chat them to see if they can tell you who they actually are, because we do have to go off of the list?
Standby, I'll send a message if you'd like to keep going down the list.
Okay, thank, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Duran. The next person we'd like to call is Carter Fleming. And it might be under Beatrice Harrison.
Checking. Beatrice Harrison is on standby for the unmute.
Thank you. We welcome Ms. Harrison to unmute and, uh,
Okay, it's unmuted. Go ahead. Hello, my name is Carter Fleming. I'm eleven years old and I go to Columbia Middle School. I want to talk to you today about the quality of the water is awful. I would not recommend it. First, it's hard to find a working water fountain and when you do find one, the water is dirty. My parents send me to school with water bottles, but because I have seven classes, I have to carry around multiple water bottles and a heavy hydro plus all day, which makes my backpack even heavier. One day I went to school and I forgot my water bottles. The temperature outside was in triple digits and to make matters worse, I had to run in PE, so I called my mom who was at work and asked her if she can bring me water. My cousins told me the school they ha- go to have filling stations where you can bring one water bottle and fill it with clean filtered water. I am asking you to replace our old water fountains with new filling stations that are also better on the environment. Thank you.
Thank, thank you.
Next, Madam President, we'd like to invite Daniel Cuevara, if they're in the Zoom meeting?
They're not showing up in the Zoom meeting.
Okay, moving on to the next person, we'd like to call Tracy Moore. If you see her in the Zoom meeting, Mr. Duran?
Asking her to unmute, yes.
Thank you, welcome, Mrs. Moore.
Oh, hi, can you hear me?
Yes, continue.
Okay, thanks. And probably nobody's in the Zoom meeting because we've been waiting here almost three hours to speak and ain't nobody got time for that. So that's probably why a lot of people aren't here and that's why we should have open session first. Anyways, I'm Tracy Moore. I'm the parent of two children at George Magnet School. And you may recall, last year I called in a few times to discuss my child who did not have a credential teacher because his was taken out of the classroom to be moved to an admin position and HR did not take the necessary steps to ensure a replacement. Just to give an update on that, he never did get a credential teacher and he had a substitute from December all the way until the last day of school in June. Going into this year, I was feeling pretty optimistic as both of my sons have credential teachers who really go above and beyond to provide their students with the high-quality education that they deserve. In fact, my youngest son's teacher lives in Hemet and even though he was displaced from his home due to the recent fire, he was still at school every day, showing up to teach the kids. The issue that we're having this year, though, is that both of my kids are being negatively impacted by a split class. Because of this class being split, my kids are now often in a room with about forty-five students. As you can imagine, with forty-five students in a class, it's very hard for adequate instruction to take place and for kids to get the one-on-one help that they need. The teachers are also tasked with providing work for these additional kids. This situation puts stress on the teachers and the overcrowding in the classroom causes anxiety for the students. I get that occasionally a class might need to be split due to lack of subs, but in this case, the teacher whose class is being split is on maternity leave, which means split classes are potentially going to be happening on a regular basis for months unless a long-term substitute can be found. After speaking to several substitutes, I was informed that the district no longer pays long-term subs extra money. From my understanding, in the past, if you were a day-to-day sub, you got a certain rate, and if you agreed to do a long-term subposition, you got a little bit extra due to all of the extra work that comes with being a long-term sub. But now the pay is the same across the board. So why would anyone want to be a long-term sub and deal with all of the extra things that come with that position if they're not going to get a little bit more money? My question for the board is, why did the district remove this incentive for our long-term subs? I hope that this issue is going to be resolved in a timely manner because, again, my son already lost a significant amount of potential growth last year due to not having a teacher and being in a room this year on a regular basis with forty-five students is not going to have any positive impact on him. I appreciate you giving me this time to speak, even though I waited three hours to do it, and I look forward to seeing a solution to this issue.
Thank, thank you.
Madam President, it is Mr. Scott Garrett. We'd like to welcome him if he's in the Zoom meeting, Mr. Duran?
Yes, I can unmute.
I, I have unmuted. Can you hear me?
Yeah, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Well, just by luck of the chance, I'm the teacher that Tracy was referring to and I, uh, do agree with her that the reason you have no, uh, you have so many missing people, this is, if, if you guys want to discourage public particip- participation, you've nailed the formula. Uh, I, while on the three hours of waiting, looked at Victorville, Apple Valley, Adelanto City. No one has public comment period after, um, the session, the closed session, and there's all, very often, no reportable action. They all have public session before they go into closed session and after they come out of closed session. This is absurd and it can only be done to discourage public participation. There's no other reason. There's no legal reason, no nothing. It's just nonsense. And that's why no one's here and, and I won't wait another three hours. And so, don't come to our meetings and say, oh, we appreciate what you're doing, because if this is the way you treat us, then you don't appreciate us. You need to have your public participation before you go into closed session and deal with your closed session. You stay until ten, eleven, twelve o'clock at night. That's your problem. That's not, that shouldn't be our problem. I'm, but my primary purpose for, uh, staying so long was I, I am one of those classes that's getting the split classes. And there is no reason that a substitute who can make two hundred and fifty dollars a day and come in and go out right when the kids walk out, doesn't do any lesson planning, doesn't correct papers, doesn't do anything. Why would someone take a long-term position? It, it'd be insane. You wouldn't do it. I wouldn't do it. It, you know, I mean, if you have the choice, you wouldn't do it. And you guys need to pay the long-term subs more money. You probably need to give them like a hundred dollars a day above and beyond, because it's a lot of work to correct papers and do all the things that you, and the planning and all that sort of thing. So, in, in, like Tracy said, if you don't change it, I'm going to just keep getting split classes. And the real losers are the kids, the kids in my class, but particularly the kids in the other class, because they're getting bounced around, no continuity, no, 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 you know, uh, resid- or no, what's the word? Continuity is a, is the best word I can think of. You know, it's one person, one day, another, another day, then I get eleven, then I, then they don't get them tomorrow and then they come back the next day. You're really doing the kids a disservice and you need to pay subs more money. At least show us that you're trying to make an effort. You may not find the subs, but if you're only paying them the same to do le- to do the same work that, that someone else, you know, does for, you know, can, they can make the same amount of money and do a lot less work, why would they do it? So please, 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 at least show us that you care. Thank you.
Thank, thank you.
Madam President, unless any of the other speakers, uh, joined us, that concludes the people for public comments this evening. Mr. Duran?
Oh, go ahead and check down the list again. We have a Lilia Morales, Liliana Morales inviting her unmute.
Thank you, Ms. Morales. Uh, welcome.
Thank you for having me. Um, so my name is Soliana Morales. I'm a parent to a Columbia Middle School student and I don't know if you're aware, but last week we had a heat wave and my child came home from school and he told me that he had not had any water to drink the whole day. He was flushed, had parched skin, parched lips. Um, he was just dehydrated and I asked him what had happened, because he normally takes water, but he told me that he told me that his reusable water bottle was misplaced early in the day and he had zero access to water the entire day. So, you know, prolonged or repeated bouts of dehydration can cause urinary tract infections, kidney stones, even kidney. And he's at risk where he will continue exhaustion. So, I'm asking as a parent and member of the other month of community to please install the water refill station that the district purchased in twenty twenty.
Uh, thank, thank you.
Mr. Duran?
I've gone through the whole list and no one else is on. That was the last participant.
Thank you, Madam President. That concludes our public speakers this evening.
Okay, uh, move, moving on to cabinet, cabinet re- re- reports?
Yes, thank you. I'm going to actually start with, uh, Mr. Moran this time on the end and give a great update on what's going on in human resources.
Okay, thank you, uh, Mr. Kraus. So, good evening, President Benz, trustees, uh, district colleagues and community members. Thank you for the opportunity again to share, uh, some updates. So first, I want to remind staff and the Adelanto-Victorville community about our classified job fair that's taking place this Saturday, September seventeenth, from nine AM to two PM at Mesa Linda Middle School. Uh, we're looking for several positions, uh, bus driver positions, child nutrition service workers, parent educators and others, including substitutes. So if you, uh, know anyone looking for a job, please send them our way and we'll hopefully could get them hired. Um, I'd also like to thank our colleagues in the payroll department. Uh, the payroll department, uh, works with our HR team. There is some crossover so, um, that we have to ensure to make sure everything's running smoothly. So, we've implemented HR payroll meetings this year and so far we've had four meetings. This collaboration is super important, like I said, uh, in our work and we want to ensure our processes and procedures are aligned to support all of our employees. So thanks to, uh, the, both of those teams. Um, also on October first, I think I mentioned this last time, but I'll do it again, because it's approaching next month. October first, our HR staff will be attending the Fall Festival at Hook Community Park. We will have a table there to promote our district as well as current job opportunities. Um, I am happy to report as well to inform the board, staff and community that we will be hosting a one-day workshop for our interns uh, and certificated substitutes, uh, who are currently working on a short-term staff permit. This workshop is going to help them learn about obtaining the preliminary California credential uh, to learn more about the RICA. The RICA is the Reading Instruction and Competency Assessment. Uh, the SESET, which is the California Subject Examinations for Teachers, as well as, uh, classroom management support and other resources. So I'd like to thank Dana Curtis from our department, Kim Bros from our department, and Vicky Bell for organizing, preparing and planning this important support for our certificated subs, so hopefully they could become a credential teachers. Um, and lastly, I'd like to thank, um, Ms. Jordan, um, from Westside Park, who invited me, uh, to meet and read to her third-grade students. I read a story titled Whistle for Willie. This story is about a boy named Peter who tries and tries to whistle and Peter wants to whistle so badly that he practices and practices and then finally he, it, it happens. So in fact, uh, Peter's just, uh, in fact, just as Peter suspected, he whistles to his dog Willie and looks around to see who's calling him. So the moral of this story, as I talked to the kids, um, is, is when you need to learn something, uh, that you don't know or you need to get better at, uh, you just need to practice and practice. And it was a great opportunity for, to engage with the kids at that level, so I wanted to share that as my concluding comments. So thank you for letting me share.
Thank, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moran. And now I'd like Dr. Dwezen to talk about the great things happening in academic services.
Alright, good evening, Board President Benz, Board of Trustees, AESD staff and community. So I'm excited to share some highlights from academic services this evening. So we did receive preliminary state test scores. Um, and so at our next board meeting, I'll be presenting those to you in detail so that you have those for our school sites. Um, it's important to note that this year's scores are considered baseline. We don't want to compare it to what we had before because it's completely different. Um, our official scores and the dashboard will not come out until December, so what I'll So what I'll be presenting to you will be preliminary. So I wanted to make sure that you are aware of that. Um, we actually are going to start our first data analysis rotation with our administrators next week at our site leadership meeting. Um, we're going to dive deep into the data and also making sure that site leaders have a, a uniform presentation of their results. Our team is making those so that every school site also presents the results of their own test scores to their parent community as well. So I look forward to sharing those with you at the next board meeting. I want to congratulate our Student Services Coordinator Rebecca Bunch. She'll be presenting at a panel at this year's CSBA conference on the topic of proactive and protective strategies in promoting well-being in our school community. So we're very proud of her for that accomplishment and on the panel. Um, our family engagement team is working busy on community partnerships to present um, workshops to parents, students and, uh, staff for drug awareness prevention. Um, as this includes, um, you know, fentanyl and other drugs that are disguised. A lot of these drugs now are disguised as candy. And so we want to make sure that our, our, our families and our community are aware of these things. Um, at our next boarding, uh, board meeting, we'll also have an update on our FPM review. So we, we are actually almost concluded. We have one more part, piece of that coming up within the next two weeks. Uh, but we are enthusiastic about the cooperation of our team members working alongside of our, um, sites to strengthen our policies and programs so that we do what's right for all of our students. Um, and then, uh, we look forward to, uh, we're close to gate testing for our second grade students. Um, there's, you'll see, actually, we have a consent agenda item this evening because for more licenses. So last year, uh, due to the pandemic, it had actually been three years that we had not, um, conducted gate testing. And so we're happy to report, we tested all second through fourth grade students last year. And so I'll be working with my team to, to develop a gate plan to address the, the needs for our students. Um, moving forward, who are identified for Gates Services. We're excited to announce that we have, uh, three of our schools are about to, uh, start what's called SAD, Students Against Destructive Decision Making, a new club on campus. So we're really excited to add this club and for those staff members that have offered to lead this club of SAD. Um, it's, it will allow students to help focus on making healthy choices and decisions. So, um, it focuses on empowerment, um, for each student, not only for themselves, but also empowering their peers and their friends as well to make, um, to be preventative in their choices. And then, uh, finally, we're preparing for our, uh, teacher. We have two more teacher professional development days coming on October seventeenth and January twenty seventh. Um, so you actually have a few, uh, consent items this evening for core, uh, professional development opportunities. So we offer a rich and broad experience for our teachers. Um, coming up on those days, we want to make sure that everyone's supported. So that concludes our comments for, um, academic services.
Thank, thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. And I just have a few quick updates and shout-outs. I had, uh, the privilege of being at Adelanto Elementary School last Friday. Mr. Rizzo and his team put on a great, the eighth annual nine eleven ceremony. It was a spectacular event. The students were very energized and it's a great way to demonstrate the history and what has occurred. And I want to thank Mrs. Anderson, uh, for bringing her students out to sing a song for us out there as well in the little quad area. And it's just a great opportunity to, uh, show our students that we care about them and support them. There were several board members I know that were out there as well, had an opportunity to come out. And it's always exciting to go out and see the great work going on at our sites. Um, also, if you're speaking of which, if you look in the back of the room, on the back wall, we have, uh, Ears of Corn. And that is from Mesa Linda, the art teacher that was here earlier this evening. He's, uh, really, Mr. Thomaselli's taken the, the reins over there and teaching a lot of great artwork. I had the privilege of being in his classroom several times this year and seeing the work that the students are doing. But on the back wall, demonstrating some of the work that they're doing. And then on the far side, uh, as you, uh, by the doors that you come in, that's West Side Park. They also had an opportunity to showcase some of the work they're doing. And so as we move forward, we really want to showcase where the work is happening in the classroom and, and demonstrate. Hence, we have the schools presenting each board meeting and the work that they'll be putting up. And they're just so excited to be able to come over here to our boardroom and just showcase to the public and to the board, the great work going on there. Recently, last week, we had an issue with our gas tank. So we have two fuel tanks here at the district. One is for unleaded fuel and the other is for diesel fuel. And because of the immense heat, uh, the gas nozzles themselves, the hoses tend to crack over time. And so one of the things that, uh, we had to do was replace those uh, with much better hoses, with much better nozzles. We are also looking at potentially putting a covering over the, uh, gas tank itself, the two gas tanks for diesel and gas out there. So, uh, all of our buses, most of our buses run on either diesel, gas or electric. Uh, our white fleet runs on gas, so it's vital that we keep those, uh, uh, keep those, uh, nozzles and those tanks in, in good order. So we did not know that they had cracked, but, uh, the Air Quality Agency comes out that helps us with our inspections, did let us know that. So we took care of that as soon as possible. And then on another front today, before the board meeting, the last announcement I have, uh, and man, I already talked to Cabinet, Mr. Moran and Dr. Dwezen, so we will be messaging this out. But the governor today has rescinded the, um, testing, weekly testing requirement for unvaccinated employees in a school district. And so as of September seventeenth, uh, we no longer will be requiring, as anyone else will not be as well, um, unvaccinated employees to have to weekly test. So that's the, uh, breaking news that happened about an hour before the board meeting. We didn't get time to share it out with staff. But Mr. Moran and his team are already working on a message, uh, that they will let all staff know about, uh, the governor's announcement. I'm sure it's probably on every newscast this evening and, and we'll be going out through social media as well. And with that, I want to say thank you very much, uh, for, uh, cabinet, uh, reporting out. And that's all I have, Madam President. Thank you.
All right. Thank, thank you. Okay, so now we are go, going on to govern, governing board mem- members re, reports and announce, announcement. And I'm just going to stop, start at the end there and we're going to work, work our way over. But I say, say it with love, trusty French, with great, the greatest of love. Okay, you know what? Next, next time, for sure, I'm going to leave a note that we start the other way.
Of course, I'll go first. Start over here, but she'll go first. Next time.
Okay, I'm still on. Well, good evening, everyone. And I want to thank everyone for being here and taking time out of your night to join us. Um, I'm going to make my comments short for the sake of time. I'm looking forward to some of the things that we have on tonight's agenda. I want to say that, um, we have had some information tonight regarding uh, Mesa Linda that I am so proud of and I am proud of the accomplishments and the uh, culture that we have going on over there. And, um, I'm just excited to see Mesa Linda soar. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, I'll go next real quickly. Um, wow, what a blessing and just a miracle that we don't have to do testing anymore. I know a lot of people are going to be really happy over that. Um, second of all, um, I did go to the nine eleven event at ASAMs last Friday. I thought it was beautiful. It was wonderful. Um, I feel honored as a board member of this district that we have not forgotten and we will not forget them. I feel a lot of people in this world have forgotten and that was such a tragedy to experience nine eleven. And I know I'll never forget it. So it's nice that our children are being reminded and told about our history so that hopefully they won't forget it. Um, and then last but not least, I do want the public to know that when we hear things, we do respond. We do not ignore things when we hear it. So having said that, I would like to ask the superintendent to make his comment, uh, if he can on what the district has done according to the water issue at Columbia Middle School.
Yes, thank you, trustee Ekis. And to address the water concerns, we do hear you and we appreciate all of your comments. Uh, we went out last week and assessed all thirty-three water fountains on the site. We have thirty-three water fountains, uh, indoors and outdoors. But we found three that needed some minor repairs that were down, but we did make sure that they were repaired, uh, the same day that we found that they were down. I know the principal has given out reusable water bottles as well. And one of the things about the water quality that, uh, unfortunately, we rely on the city of Adelanto to supply our water. And we have been in talks with them throughout the past year to make sure that they are monitoring the water quality. And if there's anything that we could do on our end to help them, uh, we are more than happy to do that. Um, unfortunately, again, it's out of our control about the quality of water, uh, with our fountains and, and where we get it coming through the plumbing. We do make sure our plumbing is flushed on a regular basis. Our custodians or MNO team do flush our sinks, not only our, our toilets, our sinks, but also our water fountains on a regular basis to make sure that the pipes are clean. For example, if they're not used for a week, if we're on break or something like that. So we also made sure that that was done the other day at Columbia Middle School. And as far as the, um, uh, indoor water, uh, the water bottle filling stations, uh, we can't put them outside because of the electricity and the plumbing and that they're meant for indoor stations, but we do have some in the warehouse. Um, we have been installing a few. I do not have the sites, but, uh, they are slated to go in the NPRs and the gyms, uh, of our district. But we do also, uh, supply as much as we can, um, reusable water bottles, uh, drinking cups, uh, in the classrooms that have the sinks in them at the middle schools and the elementary schools. Uh, and we also will continue to ensure, uh, the, uh, water quality. And one of the other things, just so you know, the, um, that our MNO team is looking at is if we can get an independent or water quality person coming in to test the water at all of our school sites, uh, just to be able to give a report potentially to the city, uh, to let them know, here's what we found on the quality of the water, independently of what the city already does to monitor their water quality.
Okay, thank you. Okay, trustee Web, Webster.
Hi. Good evening, everybody. I want to start with August twenty-sixth. I want to say thank you to our transportation team for accommodating my bus ride. I had such an amazing time with CMS students. Um, it was a little hot, but we still appreciate Mr. Kraus's push for AC in our buses, correct? Okay, um, so it was, I, I really appreciated my visit to CMS that lovely Friday. Moving on to nine eleven, or nine-nine, right, Adelanto Elementary School. We got to attend such a reminding event. You know, he not only remembered our fallen Americans, but he stressed how important that tragedy was to our country along with continuing to educate our children on the significance of that event. So I do want to make a special shout out to Mr. Rizzo for that amazing event. I also want to make a shout out to the San Bernardino Sheriff's Department, Sergeant Long and Deputy Sandals, who came out and blessed all of our little hearts with these amazing stickers. I got one too. I'm not getting one. Hey, I didn't grow up. Anyway, so we got some amazing stickers. I do also want to make a shout out to a teacher who I have to just give so many kudos, the courage it took to walk up and talk to us about a book, Ms. Fernandez. Um, and how important it was to her. It, it's called Dear Freedom Writer. I do have it with me today. Um, and I love what it stands for. And Mr. Kraus, I hope we can further push this program throughout our district um, because it does focus on our children's traumas. And if there's anything we know, we've had a traumatic two and a half years. So, um, moving on from that point, the last comment I want to make for tonight is I know election season is among us. I know that we, it's definitely a tight race. But there's still laws and there's still board policy that we must follow and respect. And I just want to point that out, uh, Board Policy eleven sixty, along with Ed Code fifty-one, fifty-two zero, prohibits any politicking on our school sites. I would appreciate that any sitting or running do respect these policies and laws in a adult and mature fashion. And that's where I'm going to end it tonight. Thank you.
Thank, thank you. Trustee Turner?
I'll make my comments quick because we're running out of time. Um, I would first like to, uh, say that I visited Columbia Middle School, um, not last week, week after, two weeks ago, and Mesa Linda Middle School. So I was able to see, you know, the transition that Mesa Linda made and, uh, separating, you know, each grade level, which was really, really amazing. Um, it's, like I said earlier, it was good to hear some positive things coming from Mesa Linda. Um, we've heard so many negative things over the years. So to hear the positivity that's going on there was absolutely inciting. And I'm really, really looking forward to that school and all of our schools continuing, um, the stride to keep our children safe, to increase our educational opportunities and to let our children grow. Um, I, I did miss nine eleven celebration this year. Um, because my granddaughter is going off to college and I was in San Diego last weekend. I'll be there this weekend as well. Um, but, uh, Mr. Rizzo put on a great program. I've been there over the years, well, not since COVID. But, um, I can just only imagine, you know, the experience that I had over the years going to that celebration. And it's always amazing. Um, in terms of the water, again, I'm glad that Mr. Kraus identified what's happening there. Uh, my question is, if the water filling stations will be placed in the multipurpose room, would our children have access to, um, entering the multipurpose room when they need to fill their bottles? So, um, that's something that, uh, we'll look at and I'm sure he'll look at and address once those filling stations get into our schools. Um, also going back to Mesa Linda and Columbia, I was also able to view our, um, uh, lunch, uh, we were there during lunchtime. And I have to shout out to our CNS workers. They did an amazing job. They are, the kitchen is so clean and the kids really, I saw kids pulling fruit and vegetables. And that was really good to see because a lot of our kids like junk food, but these kids were pulling salads and carrots. And I'm like, absolutely amazing. Went through and asked the kids if they liked the food and a lot of them said, yes, you know, kids. Well, no, I didn't like that, but, you know, it's good food. And I could tell that they do a fantastic job putting it together. But anyway, I'll keep my comments short. But again, we do hear you when you, um, speak. I know, close session, we have to handle first confidential information in close session. You know, we handle our business in public, you know, for the public to hear. But there's cer- certain things that, when you go back there, you know, it, it, we're dealing with employees basically and students. And we can't take that for granted. And to, for our people to go to work every day and to sit here on the dais and then go back into closed session late at night, we will not be making the best decisions for our children and for our employees. So I'm sorry, uh, you know, it take a while back there. But it, and I said the same thing before I got on the board. Why is it that they're taking so long? You know, now I see. And so I'm sorry, but, you know, we have to ask questions because we're dealing with people's lives and their livelihood. And I know that no one would like us to make a, a, a shabby decision based on their life. So that's, I have to apologize for that, but we have to do what we have to do. Um, so with that being said, um, I think I'm done. Thank you. Thank you again for all the presentations today. Um, El Mirage, Mesa Linda, and looking forward to other schools presenting. Thank you.
So I will keep my comments short. I just want, want to thank the staff at, um, A, A, AESC when, when AS, AES, when, when I was there for the nine eleven, eleven. Ev, everyone I came and con- contact to was so nice. And I really do appreciate, appreciate it. And I really do appreciate that, that they take the time to ma- make sure that our students, even though they won't forget because they weren't there, they weren't alive. It seems so long, but that they know this was a significant, significant time in, in our hi- history. So, okay, so let, let's go on to twelve staff re- reports and presentations. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, we do need to, the time is now nine seven seventeen. We will not, not make the nine eleven, eleven meet, meet, meeting time. That has crashed. Um, so we need to make a mo- motion to, to extend to Let's just say ten, ten o'clock or ten third, thirty for ten thirty, just. No late later than ten third thirty. Webster motions to extend to ten thirty. And can I get a sec second?
Turner second.
Can we get a vote, please?
Trustee Webster.
I.
Trustee Turner.
Turner, I.
Trustee La French.
La French, I.
Trustee Eckes.
Uh, nay, and I would like to discuss. Um, I would like to know if the board, um, or the agenda, if we, if we can table any of the. Staff reports and presentations due to time.
We can do two. Okay, we got feedback. That's good feedback. Okay. Okay, twelve, twelve, twelve oh two and twelve, twelve oh three. Can be ta- tabled until the next one?
Perfect.
Okay, do we have to vote on that?
No. No, but we still need, um, to extend the meeting. You could still do no later than ten thirty if you want to try to get out early with those.
Yeah.
Two items being, so I do have, um, trustee Webster and a second by trustee Turner. And I need one more vote and that's trustee Benz.
Um, I.
So the pass, the motion passes.
Okay, pass, pass, this is four one. Okay, so let's continue on. So let's go ahead and do twelve oh one.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. And while, uh, Mr. Lewis and Mr. Grant are pulling up the un-audited actuals presentation, I'd like to call Mr. Zach Clements to the podium. And I will be joining him out there. Thank you, Mr. Lewis, and good evening, members of the board, members of the community that are here with us this evening. I am, uh, Michael Kraus, the interim superintendent, and this evening I am. Uh, up here with Mr. Zach Clements, the Director of Fiscal Services for our district, a proud member of our budget team and. We're going to present the un-audited actuals, so we'll just be tag teaming along and I'm going to turn it over to him and Mr. Graham, when I say next, if you gentlemen would be so kind as to. Uh, forward the slides. So next, please.
Clement. Good evenings, members of the boarding cabinet. Thank you for having me tonight. I'm here to go over the un-audited actuals for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Perfect. Uh, the topics we'll cover in this presentation are the purpose, the purpose of the un-audited actuals, the revenues and expenditures. The breakdown of the ending fund balance and then the next steps. Next slide, please. Uh, un-audited actuals are the district's annual financial report, which demonstrates how the books were closed for the year. And it shows the final, the final revenues and expenditures for the fiscal year. Inside of the report, it identifies both unrestricted and restricted dollars. This report is required to go to board yearly by September fifteenth. And I'm going to pass it back to Mr. Kraus to cover the next few slides.
Thank you, Mr. Clements. And so with that, uh, as Mr. Clements stated, this is how we ended the last fiscal year. We are now into the next fiscal year, but this tells us a snapshot of how we ended the year. So if you're looking at this first slide, as Mr. Clements stated, we have unrestricted funds and restricted funds. So you'll see both up here. Restricted funds are very limited in their use. Unrestricted are pretty much what we operate on. It's the bulk of our main budget. So here you see. The unrestricted revenues that when we closed the books on un-audited actuals, we had about eighty-nine point three million in LCFF sources. One point four in other state and seventy-two thousand in, in local, so for a total of about ninety thousand eight hundred and seventy-nine dollars. And then off onto the far right, you can see what the delta is. Since we deal with over a hundred million dollar budget. Uh, this tells you plus or minus how we did on our revenues and how we did on our estimations of our expenditures. And every year and every district, you will see fluctuations, um, within these areas, whether it's to the, uh, positive or to the negative, based on how the year went. With that, the next slide, please, Mr. Durant, Mr. Lewis. So here you see our restricted revenues and the bulk of that is our federal revenues. So we receive a lot of, uh, federal revenues, such as categoricals, title one, title two, title three. We also receive a lot of ESSER funding and so that's what's in here, as you can see here, the bulk of the revenues that are under here. We also receive some restricted state, uh, money, such as special education funding, that also is restricted and it comes under this pot of money as well. And then we have some local funds that come in as restricted revenues. And so for the year, our restricted revenues are about forty-four million. And you can see the change to the far right in all of those categories. Next slide, Mr. Graham, please. So here you can see then when we combine them, because and when we report to the state, to the county, to our auditors, they have to have a breakdown and I also like to break it down. Uh, for the board and for the public as well. So here you see the combined. So when we look at our revenues for un-audited actuals and we have our total revenue about a hundred and thirty-five million. There you can see in the middle column under un-audited when we closed the books and then the change was a increase of about eight hundred and six thousand dollars. So not too bad on a hundred and. Uh, when you look there, a hundred and thirty-five million in revenue. So, um, next slide for our expenditures. So when you look at our expenditures here, you see our, uh, we have our unrestricted expenditures, again, the same format. We always report, as you can see, these categories. So certificated salaries are broken out, classified benefits, books and supplies, services. And I did want to mention, I appreciate the comment from Mr. Raider earlier related to what we, uh, refer to as our CA, CEA. calculation. And yes, the minimum requirement is sixty percent and it's based on a formula that takes your expenditures. Your total expenditures divided by your teacher salaries, teacher rate salaries. There's a whole formula that works in there. And what has been happening, the state has been aware of this, is that with our federal money that you see in there, the revenues. We've had to spend that down. We're required to spend our ESSER funding down, um, by a certain deadline. And by doing so, it actually increases our non. Um, uh, employee benefits and non-salaried employees, it increases the expenditure. So a lot of it goes into. Books and salaries, contracted services, the fours and, what we call the fours and five thousands, which you see there, books and supplies, services, capital outlay. So it did throw it off this year, but Mr. Clements and his team. I've already been talking to the county and they were well aware of this for our district as well as many other districts. We did meet the requirement last year and the year before. And we believe with, uh, working with our county office that by first interim, this will be remedied because they're working with us on our ESSER funding and how we can adjust. Uh, not spending as much right now to keep that, uh, percentage at sixty percent. As you heard, it was only off by five point six nine percent. Uh, earlier this evening. The next slide, please. So you can see our restricted expenditure, same categories here, the breakdown. And so when you look at the expenditures, about fifty-four million on the restricted side. And then the next slide, Mr. Durant, Mr. Lewis. We have a combined expenditures of about a hundred and twenty-eight million dollars when you combine both restricted and unrestricted. And, uh, I, I do have to say, um, you know, I'm very proud of this one. When you look at a hundred and twenty-eight million dollar budget. And Mr. Clements and his team, the, the change is only sixty-three thousand dollars. That is astronomically wonderful because you never see that in districts coming that close. To estimating what the expenditures could be. So I just want to give a shout out to, uh, you know, Mr. Clements. Uh, Katie Ewing, Sylvia Hayes, the whole team in fiscal services, because it takes a lot of work to get to that point. And I'm not saying we're always going to be there, but. I'm always just so amazed that it gets that close on a hundred and twenty-eight million dollar budget. So I just had to put a shout out for him on that. Uh, it's okay, Zach, you can smile. Next slide. So then we also, again, as we normally do, we, we have to look at our multi-year projections. And so here you see. How we ended the year and then this current budget year here, uh, when it comes to our ending fund balance. So when you look at twenty-one, twenty-two. Um, the total revenues expenditures are all there, how we closed the books. Here's the estimated for twenty-two, twenty-three on the right side. And so each one of these, we have to set aside funding if it's restricted. As you can see there for various things, we also have our electric bus grant that we potentially will be getting six new buses on. We have to contribute a little bit to that. We have our textbook adoption, Dr. Dweising, is that the history, uh, one coming up? That's, so we just purchased science. So the next one would be history and it's estimated around three million as well. We paid a little over three million for the science, uh, curriculum that we just, uh. Was board approved a, a little while ago. So we have a set aside for that. And then you can see the unassigned for this, uh, estimated for this next year of twelve point two million. Next slide, Mr. Grand, Mr. Lewis. So I'm going to turn it back over to Mr. Clements, who will wrap it up for us.
Hello again, everyone. Uh, next steps, once the board approves our un-audited actuals, we will send this report to the San Bernardino County Office of Education for their final review. Throughout the year, we will continue to assess current enrollment and ADA numbers to ensure we have the most up-to-date revenues. Our district auditors will be here in October and we will bring the year-end audit report to the board in December. Also in December, the first interim report is due. And that concludes our presentation. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
And with that, we'll take any questions the board may have.
Uh, board, do you have question, questions?
I'm impressed with that budgeting, sir. I mean, you've got that really close, you and your team. Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
I wish I was that good with numbers.
A, a, a small question. So you're saying on a, on audited actuals, we did hardly any deficit spending.
That is correct. Because of the revenues that came in, uh, with the state, uh, last year and then currently projected for this year. Uh, we do have an unassigned, uh, fund balance, uh, projected currently this year of twelve million. So that really offsets any. Deficit spending we potentially would have. We still do have some deficit spending and the reason being is we're spending down the ESSER funding. So it looks like we're deficit spending, but we're really not. We're just spending more to get it done by the deadline of next year and so. Uh, but we would definitely let the board know if we had any concerns related to structural deficit spending, which is ongoing deficit spending, which we want to avoid at all cost. And we work great with the county office of ed, with our auditors to make sure that we are monitoring that and then we bring before the board, uh, before it gets to any. Disastrous point, um, what, what we face. But I, I'm very pleased with this budget and, and the, how we ended the year and. Again, a shout out to Mr. Clements and his team.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank.
Great job.
Thank you. Okay, so we, um, we're gonna ta- table twelve point zero zero two and twelve point zero zero three, right?
Yes.
For the next ones.
That's correct, madam president.
All right. Okay, so let's, let's go on to third thirteen, uh, adop- adoption of the min- minutes. Um, thirteen, thirteen point zero zero one, board min- minutes. Uh, prove as writ- written and ord- ordered or filled reg- regular board me- meeting of August twenty-third. Twenty twenty-two, get I, can I get a mo- motion to approve?
I guess I motion.
Okay, and can I get a sec, second, please?
Webster, I second.
Webster, do we have, and, any did discussion? Okay, please call for the vote.
Trustee Webster.
I.
Trustee Turner.
Turner, I.
Trustee La French.
La French, I.
Trustee Eckes.
I.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, I. Mo- motion pa- passes five zero zero. Okay, go, going on to the consent agen- agenda, we are taking i- items. Fourteen, fourteen point zero two through fourth, fourteen point third thirty-one. Does and, any trustee wa- want to pull an item?
Yes, I would like to pull fourteen twenty-one.
Fourteen twenty-one.
I'd like to pull fourteen twenty-two and fourteen thirty-one.
Fourteen twenty-two and fourteen thirty-one. Is there, and, any other trustee who wants to pull? Okay, so we, um, I need a motion to approve i- items. Uh, the consent agenda, gen- agenda, mine, minus four, fourteen point twenty-one. Fourteen point twenty-two. And four, fourteen point third thirty-one. Can, can I get a mo- motion?
I guess.
Yes, and can I get a sec, second?
Turner, second.
Turner, do we have any discuss- discussion? Hearing non-call for the vote.
Trustee Webster.
I.
Turner.
Turner, I.
Trustee La French.
La French, I.
Trustee Eckes.
I.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, I. Mo- motion passes five zero. Okay, so let's go back to fort. Fourteen point twenty-one, uh, cert- certificated. Admin- administrative new hi- hire. Can I get a mo- motion to approve?
I motion to approve.
I guess I second.
I can second. Okay, we're o- open for dis- discuss- discussion.
I, I do not, I would like to call for the vote and then have a short discussion after the vote.
Okay, um, call for, for the vote, vote, please.
Trustee Webster.
I.
Trustee Turner.
Turner, I.
Trustee La French.
La French, I.
Trustee Eckes.
I.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, I. Mo- 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 motion pa- passes five zero. Now, we can have did discussion, discussion, okay.
I pulled this because I wanted to congratulate our new administrator at Morgan Kincaid, Miss Michigan, know what? Congratulations. I know that you'll do an extraordinary job, uh, in this position as you have. Been servicing our district for so many years, an outstanding teacher. So I just want to say congratulations. And. Keep up the good work. Okay.
There we go. Um, okay, let's go on to four, fourteen point twen- twenty-two. Um, ex- extra dude duty, uh, sign, signing, assignments. Can I get a mo- motion to approve?
I guess I motion.
Webster, I second. Okay, we're open for discuss- discussion.
I pulled this, uh, agenda item for solely the, the purpose of discussion, um, more like comment. I want to say thank you to every single individual on this list, as there are quite a few. Um, these are extra duty assignments and I would love to encourage more to get involved. As, you know. Every, every step counts.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry. Okay, so, um, can we get, call for a vote, please?
Trustee Webster.
I.
Trustee Turner.
Turner, I.
Trustee La French.
La French, I.
Trustee Eckes.
I.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, mo- mo- motion passes five zero zero. Okay, uh, B, B, before we go, go on to fort, fourteen point third thirty-one. I want us to dis- to discuss, uh, fort, fourteen point twenty-eight. This is the cla- classified pers- personnel, uh, class, classified man. Man- management new hi- hi- higher, um. This is, um, Mr. An- Anthony Sin- Sinak- Natra. Is will, will now be our, what's his official position?
Network analyst.
Analyst. So he is, uh, bump, bumping up. And I know that the board and cabinet and the di- district really do appreciate. The fact that he stepped up when we need, needed him. He's been there. We come to him when we. Forget passwords and things like that.
Thank you, Anthony.
Thank you so much.
He has helped, helped me fi- fix my lap. Laptop when it just did not wa- want to work and you truly are, uh, appre- appreciated, sir. And I feel that you will do well in your new pos- posi- position and. I'm sure we, we, uh, appre- appreciate your dead, the dedication to our di- district. Does any trustee wan- want to chime, chime in?
I agree a hundred percent and I thank all of our IT guys. We really can't do anything without you. You are like. The head of everything. So thank you very, very much for your dedication. And everything you do for us, it does not get unnoticed. Trust me. Thank you.
And I concur. You guys are absolutely amazing. You know, you go, we don't talk about too much. You know, we always concentrate on teachers and. Bus drivers and, but you guys, without you, we wouldn't be here. And so keep up the good work and, and congratulations again, Anthony, if you're out there listening, keep up the good work.
All right. Okay, now let, let's go on to, uh, fort, fourteen point third thirty-one. Uh, this is yours, tru- trustee Webster, can, can I get a mo- motion to, to approve?
I guess I motion.
And can I get a sec, second?
Turner, second.
All right, we're open for discuss- discussion. Um, so it's, it's my understanding, our, our, one of our folk eye, our.
Um, so it's it's my understanding our our, one of our folk I or focuses in our district is community engagement, and I just wanna take a second and say how amazing it is to see so many um volunteers on this list tonight. Seeing how much community outreach and en- engagement that we will be getting with our volunteers right there with us on campuses. So I do wanna make a special shout out to every individual on this list as well for being amazing, for joining us and for being part of that influence on our kids' lives. So, thank you, and that's it.
Okay, um, I just want 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 to say um to all of our parent parents or come commune mu- unity out out there. It's a pro- process to to be cleared, but our schools, I'm sure would wel- welcome more um vol- volunteers. You don't know how much of an impact someone can make on our stu- students. So I cha- challenge the other parent, parent, parents at the other schools to please sign up for an hour a week. It doesn't have to be all day long, it could be an hour here and there. So uh, please do that, please con- con- contact the dis- district. I believe they have to go to the website, right? Well, what's what's the pro- process?
Alright, thank you for that question. Um, so on our on our website, uh under the tab Parents, if you if you scroll down to the bottom, there's another tab called Volunteer at AESD. And there's a, there's like a little flow chart on there that you could um could follow. And it'll just say Welcome, Personal Information, all the things that are required. And then you also have a page that actually describes the volunteer application process. Step one, step two, step three, step four. It does, it does uh involve an application, and then the the volunteer must uh uh go to a volunteer orientation with the principal of the particular site. And then um after that, once we know that that's been done, uh, our department will invite that volunteer to complete fingerprinting. And once all that's cleared and we get that back from the Department of Justice fingerprinting clearance, then we'll put the name on the uh board agenda for approval, and then they can start. Uh, and there's also on that tab is a other lot of elementary school district handbook for volunteers that you they they have access to, as well as uh, you know, sometimes there's questions about the fingerprinting. So there's a one pager there of what it kind of entails. So again, that's on the main page under the parent tab.
Alright, great, thank, thank you very, very, very much. Okay, so can we get a vote on this i- item, please?
Trustee Webster.
I.
Trustee Turner.
Turner, I.
Trustee La French.
Love French, I.
Trustee Eckes.
I.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, I mo- mo- motion pa- passes five zero. Okay, go going on to new biz- business. Um, six sixteen point zero one hu- human re- re- resources. Approval of the the interim sup- superintendent con- contract. Can I, uh, we got a motion first, right?
A motion.
Okay, Webster seconds. So Turner motion, Webster seconds, we're open for discussion. You gotta turn on, you gotta press the red one.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, yes.
Your report out of closed session is at the end of your meeting?
Our report out of closed session, um, that comes.
That should have been earlier.
That's eight, okay? Before you consider this motion, can you please go back and allow me to report out of closed session under section eight? Okay. Okay, so we're gonna just take a step step back to eight point zero zero one. An a now announcement of report portable a- actions take taken during close sess- session. Thank you, the board had no reportable action other than um the board agreed by a vote of five to zero to hire an interim superintendent. The contract for the interim superintendent and the agenda item is listed in the in the agenda for tonight. Thank you. Now we can go back to that. Okay, so now let's go flip back to six sixteen. Point zero 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 one, so can we just now take take a vote? Do we wan- wanna dis- discuss?
Why don't I read out the terms of the agreement?
Okay, please.
Alright. The board agrees to hire Michael Cross as interim superintendent. The term of the agreement is from July first, twenty-twenty-two through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two. The obligations and duties of the superintendent are established in the agreement and refer to the educational program as the chief educational instructional leader. The superintendent shall serve in this capacity at the pleasure of the board and of the employee. If there is an early termination, then the superintendent may go back to his old position. Otherwise, the superintendent will be considered um for a permanent position. The superintendent will be paid on the superintendent's salary schedule.
Um, I'm sorry, can you read the date again? I think there was a.
July first, twenty-twenty-two to June thirty, twenty-twenty-three.
Okay, okay, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
No problem, no problem at all.
He will be paid on the superintendent's salary schedule, step one. Such salary schedule is available in the business office of the Adelanto Elementary School District. In the event that uh this agreement is terminated, he will be compensated by his former position and or one month of employment or days thereof. He will also have the use of a district card. In the event he chooses not to use a district card, he will be provided with the management stipend. And those are the main and germane points on of the agreement as provided. The agreement is pending board approval and then signature by the interim superintendent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, miss miss Mister Kraus, would I like to say some words? Do 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 we vote now? Let's vote. Let's take to take a vote.
Trustee Webster.
I.
Trustee Turner.
Turner, I.
Trustee La French.
Love French, I.
Trustee Eckes.
Eckes, I.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, I mo- motion pa- passes five zero. Mister Kraus, would would you like like to say some words?
Yes, Madam President, thank you. First off, I wanna thank the board for their confidence in helping this district move forward. I am excited and honored to be here before all of you this evening. Um, try not to cry. Um, this this is my family, uh, this is my home. I've been up here many years and invested in in this district, and will continue to give a hundred and ten percent. I wanna thank uh all of our employees, as I as I just was sitting here this evening, thinking about all the great work that goes on. I think about Miss Angelique Jolly at Mesa Linda teaching our students sign language. And I I learned a sign language, Miss Jolly, for you and for your students. Which is thank you for the work that she does there. I think about Angelo Ortonola at Braddock, teaching our first graders over there. I think about Miss Raider, Mister Haan at Morgan Kincaid, and the work that they do with our students over there. I think about Frankie Silva out at El Mirage, the custodian out there, and all the many hats that he wears and the hard work he puts in, day in and day out. I think about Madison Clemish, librarian at Gus Franklin, and the work that she does with our students and making sure that they have books to read. Uh, we have so many great employees in this district uh that do so much, and it's all about our students at the end of the day. And you have my commitment to work with all of our staff as we move forward to the betterment of every single student in this district, because they can succeed and all of our staff can succeed. And and our team, uh Mister Moran, Doctor Dweizen are here to also support all of our operations. And so again, thank you so much to our board for just being there for me, being there for our team, being there for our staff, our teachers, our our classified staff, our certified staff, our management staff. I'd be remiss not to mention all of our great management staff this evening, Miss Norwood, congratulations to her on our newest administrator in the district. So it's exciting to uh when we can hire from within, build that capacity. And I know that we'll continue to look for talent. This district is chock full of talent. And my goal is to really uh help people flourish. And uh with Mi- Miss Nora is a classic example. I know the special ed department is reeling right now because she's gonna be leaving them, but we're excited to have her, Mister Sinatra, moving up into the rock ass position. Our IT team with Mister Lewis and Mister Duran, all the hard work that they do at our board meetings and every day. There's just so many people that do such a great job, our transportation department, our CNS department, the list goes on. Um, but again, thank you to all of them, thank you to you, thank you to the community that comes to our board meetings. And I appreciate all the comments that we get when they're whether they're on Zoom or whether they're here, and we will get better one day at a time. So again, thank you very much for the for the opportunity. I am honored and humbled and look forward to uh moving the district forward with all of you. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Welcome to the family. Hey, Ellie, we're adopted.
That's great.
Yay. Welcome to Holly's family.
Yay. That's great. Go sign your contract.
Let's get this. Money.
It expires after midnight.
Alright, tr- trustees, one quick com- comment, please. Do we wanna take take turns? Good, good night. I'm gonna cry too.
No.
So I will hold mine, I'll I'll send you an email.
No, we're very happy.
Trustee Turn- Turner, do you wanna say something?
I would just like to say, um, thank you, Michael, for stepping in at short notice and moving this district forward. You've done an exceptional job, and I know that you will continue to do an exceptional job. I'm only hearing great things about you and uh look forward to many, many more months and years to come. Congratulations again, thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Yes.
Thank you.
Congrats.
Congratulations, so I I think you are good, getting con- 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 congratulations because your phone's been blowing up.
Yeah.
I can see it. So I just, I know that the that that I speak for men, men, sir, that I appreciate your dead dedication to our dis- district. But to me per- personally, I appreciate your hum- humility, sir, that you are not beyond learn- learning. You acknowledge knowledge all, you are na- not above above all, and that is truly appre- appreciated. And I don't think that I could ev- ever say that, no, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, before we all star- start to to weep, let's go on to six si- sixteen point zero two business business ser- services. Yes, we already vote, vote voted. Um, uh, approval of the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, an odd audited act actuals re- report. Can I get a mo- motion to approve?
I guess I motion.
Can I get a sec- second?
Turner.
We're gonna give that to La French. She's gonna take it.
Take it, girl, take it.
Okay, we are o- open for dis- discuss- discussion.
Um, I just wanna say uh thank you to Mister Clemish and Mister Kraus for their presentation tonight, and thank you for the informative information.
I just wan- wanna say how, now the word escaped me. How con- confident I feel in our bus- business team. And it and I truly uh uh appre- appreciate that you answer the questions, you make made make it clear. And as a board mem- member, that me means a lot.
Yes.
Okay, let's call a vote.
Trustee Webster.
I.
Trustee Turner.
Turner, I.
Trustee La French.
La French, I.
Trustee Eckes.
I.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, I, motion passes five zero zero zero. Okay, six sixteen point zero three of approved board res- resolution. Twenty-two point twen- twenty-three point eleven. Make making find find findings as requi- required by A B three six six one to per- permit the Board of Trustees me- meeting to contain continue to be conduct conducted by tel- telecon conference whi- while the co- COVID nine nineteen um emerg- emergency remains in place. Can I get a mo- motion to to approve?
I know I motion to approve.
Can I get a sec- second?
Webster, a second.
Okay, we are o- open for did discuss- discussion.
I just wanna reiterate, Mister Kraus, this only means that if in the emergency, we can appear via video. It does not mean that our meetings are shutting down.
No.
Thank you. I always like to clarify.
Okay. Can I get a vote? Vote, please.
Trustee Webster.
I.
Trustee Turner.
Turner, I.
Trustee La French.
Love French, I.
Trustee Eckes.
I.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, I mo- mo- motion pa- passes five zero. Go going on to seven seventeen pol- policy introductions, updates, and read readings. Uh, seven seventeen point zero zero one, ac- academic services. Approved first read reading for board pol- policy fif- fifty-one, four four forty-one point fifty-two and admin administrative reg- regulation fif- fifty-one, four forty-one point fif- fifty-two for su- suicide prevention. Can I get a mo- motion to approve?
I guess I motion.
Can I get a sec?
Webster, a second.
Okay, we are o- open for did discussion.
You know, I'm extremely excited to see this in front of us tonight, um, making policy on such a a needed, serious um situation. I think not only shows that we we care, but that we need something done on this front. So I do appreciate this being brought to board, uh, I'm assuming Tasha.
Thank you, Tasha. I appreciate you, um, and that's it. That's it. Okay, and and any other discuss- discussion? Okay, um, can can I get a vote, please?
Trustee Webster.
I.
Trustee Turner.
Turner, I.
Trustee La French.
Love French, I.
Trustee Eckes.
I.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, I mo- motion pa- passes five zero. Move, moving on to adjourn- adjournment, can I get a mo- motion?
Webster, sec. Oh, no, love French, you're hurt. I don't care. French. Yes, French, give it to her.
Is that that the mo- motion?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so love French is the mo- motion. And who's the sec- second?
I believe it's trustee Eckes motion and seconded by trustee La French.
Okay, I don't know, cuz I I was being interrupted. I didn't hear.
I got you.
Okay, can we call for a vote, please?
Trustee Webster.
I.
Trustee Turner.
Turner, I.
Trustee La French.
Love French, I.
Trustee Eckes.
Where's the discussion?
Trustee Eckes.
No, you wanna have discussion? Well, we're gonna talk about it. About about it.
That's why I said no to ten thirty. Trustee Benz. See, got my vote, yes.
I.
Motion passes.
Mo- mo- motion pass, pass passes, the time is nine fifty-six. Please have a goo- good night.
Yes, everybody, everybody.